All right, the live feed will be up any second now.
All right, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with the committee. We'll start out, we'll do something a little different since we didn't get to the committees last time. We'll start out with committees this time. We took a little time, we should have enough time left over. Do we have anything from the finance committee? Anybody? Nothing?
Sherri's appropriations tonight.
Yeah. Ordinances? Anything, just Sherri's ordinances that she has proposed? Is that it? We have anything else? Coming up in a couple of weeks?
I don't see a big... Anything, anything major coming up.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
We never see it coming, it just comes.
Does anybody have anything for the committee meeting? Kaylee, you have, you have something for Dora? Okay.
So, we met as a, our Dora committee met June first. I was there and Jeff and Mark, Mary Ellen Given from Roscoe, Lanny Spalding from our town, Amy Crown from the Chamber, Janey. Janey from Adams from Clary Gardens. And then Jackie Farley from the Chalk and Millet and Suites came. So, we kind of just discussed, had some like bullet points that we, and questions that we kind of discussed and went through. Just talking about how we wanted to link Roscoe to downtown. We talked about a lot of other cities that have done this and had some success with it. I know Mary Ellen said she had looked up, and I know Amy's done some research on other towns throughout Ohio too. So, they kind of just shared out what they have researched. We talked about boundaries and signage. We talked about trash receptacles, who would be in charge of that? Whether that would be us as a city, or are we asking Kimball to do that? Security for if we have like larger events, what that would look like, who would be in charge of that? We talked about cups. The price of cups, I don't know if Mark has any more information since then, if he's, we've looked at more pricing. We obviously want them to be, you know, recyclable and where those bins are going to be placed throughout the Dora. Just talked about other places, like Janey had a lot of, some questions about when they have events out at Clary Gardens, like if the woolly pig, you know, what that means for them, what kind of procedures that they would have to follow. So, anybody outside of the door that sells alcohol, what, what does that look like? We talked about that. I don't know if you guys have anything else that you could really think of?
Clary's, yeah, excuse my voice, had a couple cortisone shots that didn't bother me. Clary's uses woolly pig to provide-
Like, they have had events with them before.
With the Tect Clary?
Yes, right.
So, I don't see that as being any different than, say, Main Street buying their alcohol from a Tetic. You know, they're buying, they're getting the beer from outside the door, but that's just like-
Right, our, that's our question though, is an outside liquor permit holder able to participate in the Dora? So, we still don't have that answer.
Okay, so that was kind of like her, she was just kind of thinking of the things that she does and how that would affect-
They don't have a liquor permit, that was their concern.
Yeah, yes.
It's who would be, so if they could get like the warehouse or Main Street Station to come in and bartend it, since they're in the Dora, is everything, you know, do they need another permit for that? So, that's kind of something that we were, we talked about.
Now, the Village Inn and Suites, they have their own liquor license, so, you know-
Maybe if Clary's could-
Right.
Partner with someone from the Elks, the Moose, the Eagles.
Right, that's what we're seeing.
Right, those kind of things, yeah.
That was kind of a question that came about.
Yeah, yes. So, the next day, was it the next day you had your meeting at Roscoe or two days later? Okay, so, um, so what Mary Ellen did, she kind of just, we all said, let's not recreate the wheel here. Like, if there is some, you know, town that has a, you know, Dora procedure manual, let's take a look at it. Let's kind of just revamp it for Koshakton. So, that's what you have, what I handed out to council here. So, Mary Ellen Given kind of put this together. This is a draft. Within it has kind of like the proposed times, so we definitely want you guys to look, take a look at that. The, has the map and what's included within this. So, we're thinking this would be something that we would then hand out to the businesses that would be involved in the Dora. It has the timeline of kind of how we wanted to establish this and what we worked on so far, the proposed guidelines.
So, guideline number, the third bullet point. Beverages cannot be taken at one door, permit holders' business into another. I know, listening to the guy from Fremont, I think it was, followed you two on the radio. So, let's say Michelle decides that Deans would permit people to come in with, with a beer they bought at railroad or wherever.
Yes, yes.
So, she could do that?
She could do that. So, we talked about businesses having a green or red sticker on their door, so they, so people would know. Yes, you can bring your drink, but I think what this is outlining is that I can't take my drink- Yes, I can't purchase my drink at Main Street and walk into the railroad restaurant with it. I would have to dispose of it before I walked into that restaurant.
So, I'm going to add another permit holder after that, instead of just-
Instead of into another, yeah.
Instead of holder-
Yeah.
Permit holders' business into another.
So, yes.
Yeah, it would be a Dora liquor permit.
So, like, these permit holders would be responsible for buying the cups. And we talked about that, you know, are, would they have their own design on the cup? Are we just going to have Koshakton Dora? So, like, those kind of questions.
Other places they're writing, that's in their location.
Yes, that was another thing, adding the date. And that, you can even go as far as the time if you wanted to on the cup. We thought that would be very important for businesses to understand that they would have, so no one can take their cup home and then come back the next day. You know, or go to their car or wherever, you know, like, being very cautious of that. So, I think all those things are going to have to be outlined for, you know, the permit holders, the expectations and the procedures. And this is a draft, so if you want to take a look at it. I think we want, Mary Ellen would, and the committee would like to meet again too. So, we definitely want, want to kind of do that, Mark and Jeff, so.
Yeah, and I think the general consensus from the Roscoe Village Business Association was, by the end of it, their questions were answered. And I think some business people were convinced it was a good idea and others were not. I think the majority were in favor. And I think that once they see it in action more, I think the other ones will be on board. So, you know, to me, it's, it's like no food or drink in us, in establishment now. If you don't want it in there now, you're not going to want a Dora cup in there.
And I know, I think, I don't know if it was Amy or Mary Ellen was said that, they read like some, some businesses said no. Like, they, you know, they wanted their sign, this is no, you can't take your drink. And then within like a month or two, they, they took it down. They realized that from other people that it, they weren't having negative effects with that, so.
Right, the challenge for an individual business is by, it's simple to put, change a sticker.
Yes.
The permit holder, the liquor permit holder is not that simple. So, that's where, and that's where we have to make sure that all the liquor permit holders understand that it can be a year before they get on the Dora if they don't initially participate. And I haven't had one liquor permit holder that said, we don't want to do this. So, as of right now, everyone as far as liquor permit holders are, are in favor. And I, we, a good thing that brought up Jackie Farley from Village Inn and Suites, since they are a permit holder and you could either walk downtown or you can walk to Roscoe, kind of opened our eyes to the need for the bridge to connect the Doras. So, and, and her situation, it's kind of like you can go downtown or you can go to Roscoe. So, if we close the bridge off, then you can't go to Roscoe from the Villa, from the Village Inn and Suites.
Mike, have you had any feedback from your board?
Just from Main Street Station, I talked, walked a little bit about it. And, and I haven't had any negatives at all, mostly, it's been all positive, so. It's been, it's been good.
I just, I know the bridge is kind of a concern, people coming across there.
Yeah. And we talked about that too, and Jackie just kind of made the point when she has guests from out of town. They can, you know, she can serve them because they have their liquor license. And then she could say, hey, you know, there's something over at Roscoe, you can walk, you know, you can go down on Main Street and check things out, you know. So, she was kind of looking at it that way. And honestly, I didn't think about that until she, she said that. I was like, oh, you know, like, never thought of that. But I think too, you know, I guess we'll just have, it's one of those things that if it becomes a safety concern, then we'll, you know-
Is there a cross, is there a crosswalk down there?
Yeah, there's a crosswalk.
There is a crosswalk down to the parking lot?
Yeah.
Always going to the tunnel.
And always swim, swim the river out of nowhere, nowhere.
If you're on, if you're on the Village Inn and Suites side, the first crosswalk to get over is not until White Woman Street that you turn-
Okay.
Go down to Bob Evans and cross there, like, so.
Right, and the, the Clary Gardens issue, me and Max were actually, took a nice walk in the rain that day. But you can exit the rear of Clary Gardens where the stage is. And that'll shoot you right up on Maple Street. So, you're actually never on, on Chestnut Street from Clary Gardens, so.
That's the way it was growing up.
Right, there's a clear path to go, to go up.
I know I emailed Mark and probably Jeff what Zanesville, some of the activities. And I think, Jeff, I think you sent that to everyone. They're having, in part of their Dora concert downtown in June. And I think it's by the old Secrets Auditorium area. It's a country, country band or something. And then in June, it was an Eagles knockoff band. And then in August, it was the Menus, which, that's a band that's been around longer than Bobby, so. They're pretty good. I don't know if that's something we could-
But, and what they're doing in Zanesville is they're, the J.C.'s are actually selling alcohol. But in our case, I want to benefit downtown business or Roscoe business, so let's not let anyone. And if there is one event that would you, that we want to make a fundraiser for someone, fine. But I want this to be a, a support for the permit holders within the Dora. I really don't want anyone coming in from the outside and making money unless it's a special event or a group or an organization's special event to raise funds or something. But it would be nice to have something downtown, then the restaurants can sell, the permit holders can sell drinks and, and everyone wins, so.
We had a long discussion over the days and the hours too, so that's on the first page. We talked a lot about, you know, how early do we want to go? We, and like on the weekends, we knew we wanted to stop at 11 because of the ordinance in Roscoe. Like, we knew we had to, to keep that the same. But we also didn't want to like cut ourselves short where people might want to come and have an event here or do something like, oh, you know what, that's not going to work, your times are too, you know, too close together or doesn't start early enough for us. So, you know, any feedback on that too? We did, you know, we did put that exception on holidays because sometimes we have holidays that may not fall on a Friday or Saturday that we want, you know, that someone may want to do something with, so. So, yeah. So, those are the hours that we chose.
Tom, can I ask a question of the administration?
It's been a while since I've looked at this stuff when we put all this together. But memory recalls, when we submitted this application to City Council, isn't there a time limit that they have to vote on this? And did we officially submit it?
Well, I, I think that timeline is a moving target. I mean, we can always, you know, as long as nobody takes any action at this point in time and explores it, I would think that, you know, the state's not looking at it, nobody's looking at it. So, I would think we probably can resubmit it to council if we have to.
But there was also a requirement for the clerk to advertise, to know if that's ever been done.
It was advertised for the two-
The hearings.
Public, public hearings.
Yeah.
Well, we'll need to take a look at that because we'll probably have to officially resubmit an application if-
I think, I think we have like ninety-
I remember a date, sorry.
I think they have like ninety days.
I thought we said something about the end of July.
Yeah, I think we have like ninety days for submission to get it, to send it to the state. So, I think we're within that window. I have to revisit it, but I think-
You know, it's coming up, my point is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to get it done. I'd like to lock it in and get it done, so we at least get some of the summer with it. And that's, you know, me, I'm never in a hurry, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, a lot of, I think really, I mean, for the most part, we're just, it's all talk about like, what kind of cups and what kind of signage we're going to get and who's going to, who's going to do those things for us. But I think with the guidelines, if you guys have any concerns or anything that you think may be added within the guidelines or the FAQs, you know, let us know, but.
So, you mean, if we're asked, do the businesses supply the Dora cups or is that something that-
So, we'll purchase them, then they purchase them.
They would purchase them from us, okay.
And then there will have to be a set amount of how much. Because we kind of want some uniformity on how much the cup costs. Like, if they come to Main Street Station, if they go to Sorell's, if they go to the railroad, like, cups got to cost the same amount. And like, most other cities, it's, a dollar is the average cost, so.
So, the buyer would have a, a charge on top of their drink for the cup.
Right.
Okay, see, okay.
It will cost you, so.
But we don't want one establishment charging two dollars for a cup and another one charging, yes, okay.
So, we want a uniform price, right?
Anybody else have anything? No other committees? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm just back off a week vacation in the Ozarks and I had a great time. It is like you see on Netflix, probably even more exciting. I won't tell you about it at all.
You didn't electrocute anybody?
What happens in the Ozarks stays in the Ozarks.
Longer any money?
No, I didn't have any to bury this time, maybe next year. Wanted to say Heimball Park is looking awesome. I presented Fawn and Mike with the Art Mob A Key to the City. Got them a, a sign. And really exciting to see and really happy to report, there hasn't been no issues with littering or vandalism. So, my camera on a camera must have worked so far. You know, I've personally been out there several times when we've seen something on the camera, when I had a chance and I went and talked to the kids. I don't want to say publicly what I told them, but I think I got the message out to them that we're going to keep that looking nice and that's why we have nice stuff here. So, I'm really proud of the, the community. I had someone, we have a lot of litter angels who walk around and pick trash up. And I had a guy, not this past week, on the weekend before was, I was at Antiques in the Art Park. And he walked up and said, things are looking good because we went to the park to pick it up and there wasn't any trash there. So, we have 11 roads now that have been adopted from different organizations and individuals. That is, what's that represented, 88 blocks?
We have two more today.
So, yeah, so we have 13. So, just proud of people taking ownership and responsibility.
Mark, I know I talked to Robbie Williams and Mike last Wednesday. And yes, there were some areas that didn't get completed, so they went ahead and painted it. Well, it lasted 20 minutes, there was people out on skateboards on the new blacktop on freshly painted.
Right, and they stopped them, I tried to get there and they already left. And I want the, the kids to know if they want me to work on a skate park. I, I'm starting to pursue it, but let's respect what we have now and definitely take care of what we have. And then we'll work on a skate park. A skate park's from anywhere from 250,000 to half a million. So, once, you know, you write me a check for a couple hundred thousand, we're good, bro.
Next week.
Yeah, so, and that's what I went out to try to find them because I talked to Fawn and they weren't there. So, we just want to remind people, it is a basketball court. With that said, we are going to line at Max, when we'll, I, I saw that was a big deal on Facebook. Where's the three-point line? We got some shooting, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we need the, we're going to have the foul line, the three-point line.
They'll be here either this week or next week. They've actually got a job at Lake Buckhorn. So, they're not charging, going to charge us travel time or anything.
Three-point line, real in basketball, don't put one down.
Right. Since we're good customers, they'll come down and knock that out for us and-
So, we'll have out of bounds lines, foul lines. We're, we're going to, that court is a little longer than a standard court. So, we get the kids a little more exercise when they're playing on that court.
How you do line drills on that one?
We're initial stages of working on a bike path project. Very initial stages, I just told Michelle, she kind of got the insight of how slowly the government moves. On like, hey, where do we start? So, we've started with Kevin Butner at Omega. I had a, a meeting with him, not last week, but the week before. And we're going to kind of work on the, the railroad, the abandoned railroad that I constantly have to remind the railroad to mow and or weedy, which I think May 25th was my last correspondence with the railroad. And there's still weeds that are about four foot high all through the middle of town with railroad ties thrown everywhere. And it just, it would be nice for a multi-use path. So, we're going to do everything we can. We're going to also tie that into safer routes to schools, maybe for some additional funding. I know at one point, we, we looked into that and nothing ever really happened with that. So, if we can tie that multi-use path in with safer routes to schools, I think it's a win-win. It's going to take some funding. And actually, Max was out the other day networking at a meeting and talked to some of Sherrod Brown's people. And they're into getting something done for us and trying to help with the project as well. So, just, just initial, I don't want anyone to think it's going to be like 90 days, we're going to have a bike path because we're not. So, just really, you know, acquiring property, acquiring funding, it, it definitely will take some time. But I, I think something needs to be done because it just looks horrible. You know, it's, it's right in the middle of our town and I think that we need to work on beautifying that area as well as many others. Want to thank everyone, sponsors, volunteers of the Hot Air Balloon Festival. I actually got back from vacation a little early and stopped out there Saturday. I don't know what was more amazing, seeing hot air balloons or seeing people with no mask that weren't six feet apart, that were just crowded like, oh my God, they let us out of the house. It was, that was the exciting part for me. And Ginger said I couldn't walk down through the crowd because she didn't want to stay there for three hours. So, we kind of walked around everyone, I got a picture and ran. But it was exciting to see and I think, tried to get to the Corvette Cruisin' and it started raining. So, I got to go grocery shopping instead. Want to remind people, the Indian Mud Run is this Saturday. So, am I a week ahead?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. It's June 26th, which is next Saturday. They need volunteers. It's eight to three, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can contact them on Facebook, you can contact Alyssa Haynes or Hubie Cushman. Basically, when I look at the Indian Mud Run, I look at it as raising our population 1% because there'll probably be a thousand, I think there's a thousand participants. And there are a lot of people that come with those participants. So, if you see muddy people, thank them for being here. Anything we can do to be friendly, cordial and, and welcome them, let's do that. I will be there handing out trophies, I'm not going to climb any obstacles or get muddy. And I know some of you have heard, our own Cherry Wilson is battling illness. And I just found a quote, you never know how strong you are until being strong is your only choice. Of course, Bob Marley said that, my favorite. So, also, we have Cody Dar fighting illness as well. And just wanted everyone to keep them and their thoughts and prayers and wish for a positive outcome. So, if you have any questions, I definitely will answer them.
I have a suggestion if I might, being as I was on the Chalk County Bike Path Committee. One of the things that we investigated when acquiring the railroad properties, one thing to say to them as a benefit, a lot of times they have to go back and pick up the railroad ties, which are treated with substances that could be harmful for the environment. So, that could push them further in your favor. And also, it would be possible to file for grants for environmental cleanup.
Right.
In that respect.
If anyone wants to help, I've handed that project off to Michelle Turner-Gans, Councilwoman. She is the woman. So, I actually met with, I've had a couple meetings with, I think his name's Dan Reeves. He's with Erie, Ohio Erie Canal Bike Way Coalition, I think that's his title. Met with County Engineer Fred Wachtel, which in turn hands me a box of history of, here's what we've tried, here's the things that have been said. I don't know how many, probably 20 years of history.
Oh, yeah.
So, I looked at it and I called Michelle and I said, here. She's like, anything you want. And I said, here you go.
Did like to read.
All right, pass it right on.
So, it's like, here, Michelle. So, if anyone, the community, I'm sure at some point, we're going to, to form a committee to form something to move in, in a positive direction with that project. But I think that is right in the middle of town. What better, better way for people to be able to utilize that and get out and exercise and, you know, it's, it, it will be a, a nice addition. So, and it will take time, but it will be good, I'm hopeful.
My mention, the Indian Mud Run is a fundraiser, was its initial intent. And the money goes to the Friends of the Park, which is a branch of, of the Lake Park, Park District. So, it's a, it's a good cause. And I know one of your issues while running was the building in the middle of softball lot. Okay, K had a huge tournament over there. Last weekend, we had a lot of positive comments about the, the fields itself, new backstops, the buildings.
I smile when I walk by there because I'm like, just anything we can get done, no matter who it is in the whole county, I love. It was, it was, and I'm-
There was a lot of people there over the weekend.
It's beautiful to see it now, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful facility.
Sixteen teams maybe?
Yeah.
I, actually, I, I, one more thing, I want to thank, speaking of that, the Chalkton Foundation has awarded us 8,240 some dollars to re-roof the dugouts at Kids America Park. There's, you can see daylight through them. So, once again, people coming into town and are keeping our facilities up, I want to thank the Chalkton Foundation. I think the Chalkton Foundation was involved in the softball complex as well at Lake Park. So, the good that the Chalkton Foundation does, we appreciate them. And definitely the, the park, the softball complex is hot rods in heaven smiling, I guarantee you.
I think we're going to, this isn't meant to be funny, it's serious, since they spent so much time over there. We're going to name the new concession stand after Hot Rod and Gary's. There should be a plaque coming for that, so.
Awesome.
Oh, that is awesome.
There's also plans to revive the old JV baseball field where there's still two blocks. I think that, that's going to be reconditioned into a baseball field, so, conjunction with K.A.
So, Mark, that from the foundation is for our city recreation?
Yes.
Our park, okay. I heard you say Kids America, so that's why I was-
For our, right, our baseball field. At Kids America, yeah. And our guys have been out mowing and doing a great job, so, anything, anyone- And our guys have been out mowing and doing a great job. So anything anyone sees in the parks, let us know or anywhere else.
Anybody else have anything for the mayor? Safety Director?
We're working on setting up the testing for the, uh, fire chief's position. That'll occur on July twentieth. Uh, originally scheduled for July first. We pushed that back due to a couple of issues with the, uh, union. So the guy that's giving the testing was able to push it back to July twentieth. Uh, we began our union negotiations with the IAFF on Wednesday, sixteenth. Uh, let's see. Water meters in West Lafayette, which is the third phase of that project. Uh, we'll be down to seventeen meters by the end of the week. So out of like a thousand, we've done pretty well. They get, yeah, it's working with homeowners to make sure they're home and the guys could be there and all that good stuff. So very happy with that. The twentieth street water and street repair, water line, street repairs are being engineered at this time. And we received the go-ahead from our funding organizations to make that part of that West Lafayette project. So I mean, we, you know, pay for it over thirty years with no interest versus taking it out of our coffers immediately. Uh, Michael, agency approvals have been received for eighth and ninth street water line and all that's been sent to John Kleeg. As you know, that grant come through the county. So John Kleeg, he does our grants. He'll be setting up the bid process, uh, for the bids to happen sometime in July.
I appreciate the, uh, the input on that too. Matter of fact, I, I kinda blew the map up. I thought I'm gonna walk the streets and kinda explain to everybody what's gonna happen in approximate time. So so when they come on, they want, you know, their driveway is gone, they, you know.
I mean, they'll be put back the way, you know, it's our concrete.
Oh, I know that, yeah. But some people don't know that. So I'm gonna walk and do, like I say, the map, the, the outline, well, showing the, uh, the direction.
I'm sure you can make it look prettier than the one I sent to you, so. We're working on establishing the dates to begin our Ask Me negotiations as well. So in case you guys done all that, the fire and Ask Me are always the same year, every three years. I would love to get longer contracts, but by the higher revised code, you can only have three-year contracts, which was something I learned. Parks, we've replaced all the swings, uh, strap swings and we've, and at residential request, we've installed a couple of baby swings as well. So Mark talked about the grant. And hopefully this week we'll begin mosquito spraying. The weather has not been conducive to mosquito spraying. You actually need twenty-four hours with no rain for that to work. Or you just waste that chemical. This week looks pretty decent with the high weather pattern or high-pressure weather pattern. So uh, just talked to Joe Garrett this afternoon and see if we get some going. Cause we're also contracted with West Lafayette to do theirs as well. So and that's all I have unless you guys have questions.
I appreciate the street crew doing Buena Vista. Like I told you, I didn't, I don't think any of them, uh, any of my neighbors or anything probably called you and thanked you, but I appreciate it. So.
Hey, Max, uh, do you have, is there summer help working the lawns over at the water department or? They do about every week. They do, they're doing a really good job. I'm wondering if they can't with their weed eaters walk across the street and knock those weeds out along that fence there.
I meant to call in today. I seen that this weekend. Some of the weed are getting high. The grass is starting.
Yes, I seen that.
I think if we get this weekend without any rain, we may have enough where we can start just mowing that rather than weeding. And so it'll look a little better.
Okay.
Max, um, I had someone ask me about who's responsible for mowing two areas. One was the steps beyond Bank Street and that hillside. Is that ours?
Trade-off every year. We do part of it in that wing and the township.
That's actually in the township, but they don't have that bat wing like we do. So we kinda.
That was one area. And the other one was the, you know, you know, whether it's Center Street or these, I don't know. I get this Center Street, there was a bank then that goes down from it. I guess where we had a a water break or something years ago. Um, that's one, a few years ago, we had one of our local residents who was mad about the, uh, yeah, it needs mowed. I did go over and look at it. He was out there taking pictures.
Is there a bunch of rocks on there?
There was a landslide or.
Actually spray that sometime around them. Weed killer, let's put that away.
Um, are they still doing pot hole repairs and other repairs? I know, um, I was just on Sarah Drive. There are some very, very large.
That was on my list also.
Yeah. Yes.
I had, um, a couple of people travel, Cassian Hollow rode a lot. And I know I brought this up, I'll just keep bringing it up. Uh, it's basically the hill part going up toward the water tower. We need to come up with a plan. And the other one is the consistent, I, I was around probably ten or fifteen residents of the Spittler Hill, Kimberly Lane area and you about need new shocks to go up through there anymore. I can't imagine it didn't damage our snow blades.
And, and the background of Sarah and Spittler Drive were neither road was built properly. And now, uh, Spittler Drive is a million-dollar road.
Have you, have you read the background of how that was developed and it was actually engineered and approved by the city? I don't know about Sarah Drive, I know Spittler Road was. And it, and then it was, the city took control of that, but they were actually okay to plans for that. And that was probably forty years ago, fifty, I don't know. I was, Tom, I don't know if you know the history of that. I keep telling them, they say something to me to talk to that large person in their area. You?
If you wanna cut paving out of the city for two years, we'll do it.
Well, I.
But I think.
We just can't let it continue to decay or it's gonna cost us even more. So I don't know if we can come up with a plan where we're going.
We do full-depth repairs in the areas as they go back. There's many springs coming under that road that eats out the, the base, little ba-, little bases there.
I don't know if we can do a third at a time or what.
Well, and then when you're building and you're running a heavy concrete truck, it's not helping anything either. When they're, you know, I'm almost to the point where when everything is built up there, then let's look into fixing the road.
I think the other issue is garbage truck.
Right, right, garbage truck.
But we just cannot continue to ignore, there's, I don't know what your taxes are there, Tom, but I guarantee you there's a gaggle of tax money coming out of that that area. And there's some really ticked off people. I'd just tell them, come to a meeting, so.
No, and I've, I've suggested that. My, and I've talked to multiple residents there. My issue is to fix the road and to fix it properly. We're, we're a mil-, we're at least a million to fix it. And that's a couple of years worth paving in town. So do I wanna make everyone happy? Yes. Do I want to not pave any roads in the city of Shockville for two years?
Alls I'm asking is if we, we need to come up with a plan. We don't think we have done that. We need to research what, why it happened and how we can fix it without gutting the pavement.
And make sure it doesn't happen again on another.
Right, on any other road, right. But they're the same exact, the same.
When we get a bad area, and I think Tom will test this, we went up there and do what we call a full-depth repair. Where we cut out the, I've seen where the clay comes right up through the asphalt. That's how little bases up there. We'll cut that out, dig down, put the three or four in, put some concrete in, pave over it. That's been our plan because that's something we can do in-house without, cause I sent Fred, Mark's right, Fred Wachtel, this has been two years ago, up there and I said, "What would it take?" He doesn't, you know, not full blown engineering, but do, do what he does. He said eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand. So it, it, I mean, it's a problem. I've had many conversations with Tom, however, we try to keep it up as best we can, but.
I keep referring him to Tom.
In addition to the street, the catch basins are starting to collapse as well. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I received an email today. I probably should bring it up during the meeting in Communications and I, I did send it to Max. Guy's name is Fred Hannan. He lives on Cassian Avenue. And evidently the alley behind his house was paved or whatever. And then there was some gas line work done. And now the alley is a mess.
Those were actually sanitary sewer. So it was all back five or six years. Actually lost a camera in there. I drew out and looked at it with Kevin. They had the Albert Company come in and start, this is like thirteen feet down. We don't even have anything in there to dig that deep. And, uh, they just never went back and fixed the holes. So
So what can I tell you?
Kevin's going to work on getting some, uh, asphalt put over those holes.
Cause now he's saying it's breeding mosquitoes and.
Well, they're, they're out.
It does look bad. He sent me a picture and it's not a pretty sight. So whatever we can do to, to rectify would be good.
I've been getting phone calls. Max, do you have a, an area schedule on your mosquito spraying?
Spittler Hills last, Tom.
Oh, I know that.
They have zones, like, like one about new zone. They have four zones that they do.
Well, I know, I know the weather, something to do with that. But I was just wondering, I mean, people are asking when and I'd like to be able to say, well, we're gonna do these areas first before they get here.
I've been asking one for two weeks trying to get that done. So yeah, in fact, uh, my, uh, text to Joe Garrett, he's over that program. Our can, the city sanitarium, that's, he buys the chemical, that's supposed to be his baby. But I said, "If it doesn't get done, I'm going to drive the truck myself." And he laughed and I said, "No, I'm serious. I'm capable of doing that at least once, cause I think it'd be fun if nothing else." But.
I believe we still have some grant money for mosquito spraying, so.
Exactly.
Use it.
I'm trying to get a lot done this week. If you get out, you can get a lot knocked out in a week. You can get about the whole city done in five nights. So.
Anybody else?
Have we, um,
Thanks, man.
Have we made any decisions on the trees on Main Street?
That's a big topic as I went up down Main Street this past week.
Yeah, I've gotten some questions recently.
Last time it was gonna be fall, but.
Nothing yet?
Nothing.
Okay.
Most public, most on public.
Okay.
Be like that answer.
Nothing, yeah.
You have nothing?
We're actively seeking a solution.
Excellent.
Cherry, auditors report?
Um, a couple of things. Um, the Utilities Director, Dave K-Dry, um, sent me a transfer request for the next meeting. Um, he would like to transfer fifty thousand dollars from his sewage capital improvement line to his sewage, um, sewer maintenance line. Um, he said, uh, he just needs additional funds for additional repairs and cleanup for sanitary sewer overflow. And I think that was an issue that resulted down along the end of Second Street across from the sewage treatment plant and the homes some there. And then Max can comment it further if he wants to, but if there was an incident, but he wanted to, there's gonna be some repairs, some maintenance. So he wanted to do that transfer. Also, I know I, I mentioned to you last time that we're gonna further research, um, the remaining home health, um, dollars in the home health fund, hundred eighty thousand, seven fifty-six, sixty-four. We can, um, get that over to our general fund is where it has to go. And council can do that by legislation. So I'm gonna get the information to Bob. He's gonna draft the ordinance and hopefully I'll be able to get it done this week to have for you to have on the agenda for next week. But if by chance I have a really busy week this week, so if I don't, you know, at the next meeting in July, if, if you're okay with me knowing that it's gonna be on the agenda, either, you know, at the next meeting, the twenty-eighth or the first one in July. So, um, but it's just gonna be the ordinance. So then that we can get that money over to the general fund. Cause it's been two full years and I feel everything's probably all good with it. So unless you have any questions on the appropriations that I sent you, um, that to request to be added to the agenda tonight, that's how I have. And I would appreciate if those could be passed emergency before the end of the week.
Another Sheriff's report, he emailed that. Did everybody get that? Looked at it? Okay. Jeff? You, you emailed your report through, through May?
Yes.
See if I have any questions for Jeff? Off the hot seat, yeah.
I think I would say my guys are behind on, on mowing because we spent two weeks helping cemeteries out and get caught up for Memorial Day. So we are back on trying to get things knocked down. We're starting on the ones that the city and the way I'm banking transition. So we don't look bad ourselves. Once we get those knocked out, back into the neighborhood, trying to get to ones who aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And I've sent Bob a few clients and, uh, that he needed to touch base with and he'll probably be in some more.
If you, um, has the, uh, summer help from JFS the kids, have they started? Do they start this week?
They don't come to me. They go down to the cemetery or in the street, I think. I, one of the ones I get, we hire two college kids every, every summer and they just work strictly for City Hall and then the summer help goes elsewhere.
I think they either started today or next Monday on the two.
I was thinking it was today. I heard they were supposed to start.
I, I did, Jeff, I emailed you some concerns about the old country club property. Were you able to make contact with Hitchens and get that?
Bob is gonna make that contact.
Thank you.
I, I think we, uh, as, as a council, the administration would love for you guys to look at creative ways that we don't have to deal with the same people.
Well, here's what I was just gonna ask. Is there any way we could get a list of those people, those properties that are constantly, you know, that way, if like they're in our ward, like we, even if it's we drive by and just kinda check on it ourselves. I don't, I mean, I don't know how we can help.
Most of them that we are dealing with are vacant properties.
The vacant properties, okay.
And, you know, we pass the vacant property ordinance and that's a good thing it was passed, but you know, all we can do is put it on their taxes. And if they don't pay the taxes, we're stuck anyway. So.
I know it's a large area, but I, I, I just can't get it out of my mind. If, if we were able to maintain it as a golf course.
Right.
They should be able to mow it.
Well, and, right. And, and all he says is, you know, he goes in, uh, part of the year, part of it bales. He sells off bales. And that's why part of the stuff, not done with the rest of it. He says, "I brush all what I can." And so I turned it over to Bob.
If I lived on Kennelworth, the alley side or Demme and the alley side, I would be.
I keep hearing raccoon problem.
Raccoon and deer and who else? Who knows what else is in there? Bob, what's, I know this was a problem, I know it was last fall.
With the deer.
Hudson's come to. Yeah, right. What?
Charging.
What happens when you get charged? Can you professionally? Is the consequence enough to wake them up? Can we mandate a con- consequence or is that just dealt with by higher revised code?
You can increase the penalties, make it more refined, make it jail if you wanted to.
I think five hundred dollar fine.
Space available for the judge to put people in.
Five hundred dollar fine the first time, a thousand the second time.
Can you do a daily? Could you do a daily fine?
I think it already is a daily if I remember. Yes, you can. But the fact of the matter is the judge has to be willing to, to fine people those amounts. Traditionally, he's not.
All right, that answers my question. Uh, you know, we can have all the ordinances we want, but if there's no teeth to it, you might as well throw it trash.
Fine and court costs and then suspend the fine.
Right. And that's what we deal with. We push and we kill trees. And Jeff calls, emails, we push and then it gets to court and it's kinda like.
Well, that's what I thought might be happening. It's, that'd be a way to deal with that. I don't know what it is.
And I have, you know, I've got a couple of properties that, that we do year after year after year, that the houses are terrible. That, you know, we go after them. But then the problem is, once we go after them, it was a three-year project to get the properties off Doug Gilbert. Then we get them, then we pay to tear them down. And then we just give them to the land bank. So the city has money in legal fees, has, has all our time doing it. Has, has the money to tear them down. We don't get anything back for it.
Have we, uh, mowed those properties on Elm lately?
They, they were being moved this week. Those are now turned to land banks. That's what I'm saying. We're doing those properties first. And just so you know, Seven Ten Elm, uh, we took, the land bank took two sealed bids on it. Uh, they was open, they were open today. So I contacted the, the winning bidder on that. And within the next couple of weeks, they will have ownership of that property. We have to get Mr. Carter in to finish the job he started. It's not done yet. Those have to be leveled out. They have to be seeded and they have to be strawled. So. Those have to be leveled out, they have to be seeded and they have to be strawled, so I'll get Kevin to do with that tomorrow. And then there was a property on uh, Cascam Hollow, that the land bank just is in the process of selling, so those two will be back into the tax base.
Yeah, if, I mean, if it was my choice and we had an open checkbook, I would tear everything down that needs tore down. Uh, another issue we've had is the the old glove factory on Fifth Street. I've made about oh, four trips out there in the last couple of weeks and talked to the property owner myself personally. He says that it's coming down, uh, there is no demo permit, so I kind of called him out on it, uh, and the people on Fourth Street, you know, having people in and out of there, there was a win, a board off a window, you know, I mean, we have our finger on the pulse of what's going on with it. It's just getting getting action, you know, um, um, getting rid of these buildings.
Tom, is part of our structure ordinance, they can't put boards over windows, has to be actual windows, and that, I think that's in our ordinance.
It it has to, it can't be, it's not supposed to be boards, it's supposed to be something that gives a clear view, so if there's a fire in there, you can see it happening.
So if they're boarding them up, that's not right either.
Well, but.
Well, it's better than having.
We're the one that, we're the ones that have to pay to have it done.
Okay.
And, you know, for the safety reasons, we're just, at this point in time, doing what we need to do to get it sealed up.
Jeff, the the vacant building ordinance, doesn't that cover residential as well?
It does, but again, we're right back to the same process, that you gotta get them and and Mike is is working on that, trying to get people to send money, but the ordinance says if they don't send money, well, we're gonna apply to the taxes. You know, the ones that we have to apply to taxes.
So if they gone foreclosure, yeah, if they gone foreclosure.
I have one other question. If a building, if a vacant building originally had um a sprinkler system, does that sprinkler system have to be operational?
By by Ohio Fire Code, that system, if the building was required to have fully sprinkler system, it was occupied, that sprinkler system has to be kept intact and operational with the building has to come to ground, that's why Freddie products were brought to the ground. Uh, however, the fire chief or the authority having jurisdiction can look at that and say, well, there's no structures close to it, so it is not a problem other than for that building, and he can he can grant them the ability not to have sprinkler system operational.
I was just wondering about the one building on Main Street that, um, the one you smell when you walk past, if that system is.
Totally be a fire issue, uh, fire department, fire, fire department is the authority having jurisdiction, could require that sprinkler system to be put back in operation. But there again, you're probably gonna have a several-year court battle to get that accomplished.
You ever squeezed blood out of a turtle?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Does uh, and everybody got the income tax report emailed from Jackie Pushman? Okay, does anybody have anything else for the committee meeting? Just take a quick break, see you in changers.
We got one of those very instances where we shut stones down because we had wet systems. There's no building to eat. So the industry busted all the lives, makes him him on wall if we left water. We kept all like the main office where it was occupied, like the paper mill was.
Remembered earlier today, she's a senior at the shotgun high school.
They were operational, other water shut off, the drain.
And so we're gonna pay for her to go to a camp or something, somewhere far as she's gonna.
Call the committee in order. Good evening, everyone, today is Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, it's seven oh two, it's regularly scheduled, it's Shawton City Council meeting. Just more police call rule. Andrews?
Here.
Barcroft, here. Rose, here. Uh, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mishler are absent. I need a motion, I need a motion. Excuse both, Chad Johnson and Mr. Mishler, second. Um, we'll call Andrews. We're voting on it now.
Oh, yes.
Barcroft, yes, Rose, yes. More, yes, Turner?
Yes.
Uh, Moore, he's here. And Turner's. They were there, right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, God, we thank you again for this opportunity to represent the city. Um, be with us tonight as we make decisions, we pray this in your name, amen.
Council minutes for the, from the May twenty-fourth meeting, uh, we're not available due to unforeseen circumstances, we need to put off accepting those minutes until our next scheduled council meeting. See if I have any questions or comments about that. Need a motion to delay that until our next meeting? Show. Motion, second, Mike seconded. Andrews?
Yes.
Barcroft, yes, Rose, yes. More, yes, Turner?
Yes.
It's meant to be delayed till next meeting, correct? Public input, we have with us Brooke Andrews, uh, Brooke Alberson from the United Way fundraiser, she requested to be here, so.
Yes, I have Mary Beck with me as well, we both work in Mr. Mishler's office, I have a little handout I wanna give you as well, I'll let Mary start kind of explaining what this is.
Okay, the United Way fundraiser this year is gonna be, um, the commissioner kind of hosting this, um, it's gonna be on September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two years ago, we had um an elected official to help us to raise amongst the elected officials. It was very successful, we raised a lot of money, we gave, it was over two thousand dollars, and and we earned that in about a now and a half. So we did really, really well, and this year, well, last year we wanted to extend it, but we were unable to because of COVID. So this year, we decided we wanted to try that again, so we are extending that, and this year, we're going to have it on September the eighth, twenty twenty-one, um, it's gonna be at twelve o'clock noon, and we're inviting the city to participate as well. Yeah, we have four ways to win, each elected official can participate, and you have a three-member team, okay? But. I I, we don't wanna tell you what the obstacles are, because that kind of takes away from the fun, but.
You will know a week prior to what the obstacles are.
You'll know what the course is, and you're gonna know what it's laid out, we're gonna lay it out on paper and you see what each obstacle is. We had some um of the of the elected officials that are, were concerned about the tricycles and they're getting older and that's not really healthy for them, and so we have actually changed a few things. You have a three-member team, so not everybody has to do a certain thing, you know what I mean, if if you don't wanna ride the tricycle, someone else on your team can ride the tricycle, if that's in an obstacle, or whatever the obstacle. Some obstacles you all will participate and some obstacles that's kind of challenging or whatever will make.
They're not all gonna be physical obstacles, some of them will be mental, some of them will be a challenge, however, if you don't wanna participate in an obstacle, you will have the ability to buy three tickets that you can just pass out obstacle and move on. Those will be purchased, though, the day of the event if you like.
For fifty dollars. So, um, but then you can have them.
So after you look at the map, if you see something that you might not like, and you wanna purchase those, get out of, get out of jail, uh.
Skip this obstacle.
You can do it.
So, um, we're gonna have an overall race minute. Um, what you'll do is, um, when you get there, you're gonna draw straws, uh, you will be placed on a bracket, one, two, three, four, five, you know, and the first two will race, the second two, and we'll go from there. Um, and you'll you'll just go off the bracket if you win. Um, also, we and the overall winner will get the trophy and we have the officials cut for you. Judge Bakers had it for two and he cheated and he won, but he says he did not, so we don't argue with him, cause we don't look good in one dress. So the best team costume is another award that you can win, because we encourage you to dress up.
Make it fun.
Make it fun, however you want your team to be. Uh, two years ago, we had Ricky Bobby and yeah, it was, it was really fun.
Oh, well, that's not something you have to do, that's just something fun to do.
So then, also, if you don't wanna participate, but you wanna do maybe an obstacle or sponsor an obstacle, um, you can do that, and the best obstacle is another way to win. And if you win, all the money that's in your, whoever gets the most money in their jar for that obstacle will be able to donate that in their name to the United Way. Uh, people's choice is another way to to win. Um, like we said, there will be three on your team.
Choose wisely.
Yes, choose wisely.
It doesn't have to be somebody you work with, it can be family, friends, anybody.
And, um, yeah, choose wisely. Um, so also, we're going to do, um, at the beginning will be the elected official race, and then we're going to open it up, um, we're gonna open it up to the community and they can try them, their their skills on the obstacle. Um, and it'll be basically whoever, you know, what is wins, we're gonna do brackets or something. So, um, with that, and then at the end, we'll do the guns and hoses, so we're gonna have the firefighters versus the sheriffs.
We'll both have three teams and we'll see who wins that. That's something we added and that's something that we look forward to doing every year as well, having those guns versus hoses.
So as you can see, this, we plan to do it all day again. Um, also we have some, um, elected officials already that have, uh, camera, uh, park courts and she's working with.
She's going to do something with kids.
Oil and water. I think they're going to do tractor races for kids.
Jeanette Donner is bringing a horse and a donkey.
The right, um, don't hear cut.
The dog.
She said you could cut, cut her ass.
I didn't exactly know she was raising a donkey and you could cut my ass, so.
I thought I was the only one.
That's what she told us. That was going to be her sign.
Yes. We have a lot of different events going on. So if, if this is something you don't want to do and participate with your team, um, we encourage you to do a food stamp or do an obstacle. Um, and then outside the box facing, we have a, a department that's doing, having a donkey. Um, so we do a lot of different activities that we're hoping to have throughout the whole day, making this something that the community looks forward to every year. Um, seeing you elected officials out of your element, just being normal people to the community.
And I'm not going to lie, we will laugh at you, but it's all in good fun.
It is.
And we hope that you can laugh at yourself too. I mean, I, Dane was stuck in the gutter last year. He cannot get out of gutter. Who's teasing you to do that?
He's used to that.
But, um, so we're trying to get everybody to participate, um, and we hope everybody will. Um, but even, even if you don't want to do the race, there's got to be some other way to participate. I mean, if you want to, like. We'd really appreciate it. So we'd like to know, um, if you plan to participate and, or if you want to do, or as well as if you want to do an obstacle, sponsor an obstacle, or if you want to have a food stamp, or you want whatever. If you have anything you do, the money that you earn there goes, you get it donated in your name or your team's name.
When do you have to know?
Soon.
The sooner the better.
Because we, uh, if, we don't get enough people to do food stamps and things like that, we have to find vendors to come in. And then, then that won't go to the United Way, but at least there'll be something there. It will be there.
Any questions, anything?
Anyone? Anything? Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Do we have?
I'm going to have the winning.
And so it starts. Pretty sure he's going to win too.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, do we have any other, um, input? You got any emails?
Uh, no. I, I do, I'll give one max, which is four of them.
See any other public input? Uh, we have a request for additions to the agenda. Tonight, we have ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-one. In order to establish a new fund, West Lafayette Sewer, twenty-five dash twenty-one appropriations, and twenty-six dash twenty-one appropriations. Need a motion to add the listed agendas, the listed ordinance to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add the additions to the agenda.
Really made a motion? I'll second. Tom second. Moore? Andrews?
Yes.
Mark Roth?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Moore, yes, Turner?
Yes.
Any standing committee reports? Mr. Mills, anything to add from the, uh, committee meetings?
No, I, I just want to say a, a big thank you for all the positivity that I've seen throughout our community and, and people, everyone being part of that. Uh, not just, uh, you know, everyone as a whole being part of the positive change. Like what we see and, and we're working hard and want, want to definitely let the public know that council meetings are open now. So the public can attend council meetings and council chambers and say, oh, want to welcome them here. They, the people in the government. So let's, let's see some more involvement.
Have any comments, questions from Mayor? Safety Director's report, Max?
Uh, nothing more than what I reported other than said union negotiations are beginning this week with the fire local. And I'm sure by the end of the month they'll be starting the basket as well. So we'll have probably the funds instead of getting through all that. And as we should say again, council and mayor Rada, uh, we did receive that shock foundation grant for replacement dugouts of Red Park. Uh, we're very appreciative of that. I think you recognize how much money we're spending on pretty much parks under the Florida. So appreciate their efforts.
Parks are looking a lot better. A little more activity on them as well.
Has any questions?
Anybody else, anybody have any questions?
Max, I did get that call from Fred Hammond about the alley behind Casket Hollow. And I know you addressed that during the committee meeting stating that that was going to be looked at. So I will respond to Mr. Hammond if that is being taken care of and defended. Thank you.
And I should mention, see before I get off there about, uh, we talked about mosquito spraying. Uh, looks like this week's coming, the first week we've had, it's coming conducive to not getting rain within twenty-four hours after doing it. So if I make every attempt I can to, yeah, spray the streets.
Well, Director?
I did submit my report, uh, probably a week or two ago, but I'm not sure whether or not it was forwarded to council members. If you do not have it, then I'll make sure you have it for the next meeting. Okay. Beyond that, I have nothing unless there's questions.
Any questions? Augurs report, Cherry, do you have anything?
I do. I had emailed you, um, your May reports and so Roger, they do need to be listed, um, separately in the minutes. So I think to get you this copy, but it's your statement of passion that May twenty-eighth, the bank report, May twenty-eighth, the detailed trial balance, May twenty-eighth, detailed check report, May twelfth, um, detailed check report of May twenty-sixth and then annals of May twenty-sixth. If you have any questions, I can answer them. I have my copies here. If not, they just need to be approved in the minutes.
Do you, per Augurs report?
Yeah.
Cherry, you made a motion to sub, sub it? I'll second. Andrews?
Yes.
Mark Roth?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Moore, yes, Turner?
Yes.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Crawford emailed the report on June twelfth. I asked earlier at the committee meeting, we all have it. Thanks for the email. Appreciate it. Wonderful. I think one of those for the parking was me on, uh, Bird Avenue, the wrong side of the street. I didn't even, I didn't even see the sign, so. Sheriff had been doing that for years.
Can the, uh, guys on our patrol kind of keep an eye out on cars that are parked on our tree lawn and also sidewalks? Couple of centuries, I counted twenty. These weren't on Alaway Street. So I think we need to take them to get them to put them on or what, but it's anyone did, I think they need to put them on.
Still on our radar.
Thank you.
Have any questions for Sheriff? Thank you. Property code investigator, Mr. Quarter, did he email us his report as well on June eleventh? Everybody have any questions in committee meeting? Does anybody have anything now?
The only thing I would add is, uh, parks are under camera now. Uh, a couple of them have got cameras up operational, so anything happens in those parks, we do have evidence that we can prosecute.
Anything else? Income tax report. We got an email from Techie Cushman on May twenty-seventh. So I think everybody was good with that at the committee meeting. Mr. Moore, do we have any other council member or any other council member with the force that we emailed to anyone? We haven't gone over, nothing I'm aware of. We'll now go into legislation. Legislation at the first reading. I'll ask Mr. Moore to read the first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-one.
In order to establish a new fund, nine forty Wesley, yes, sewer.
Heard the first reading of twenty-four dash twenty-one. Are there any questions or comments? They're all going to take its course tonight. Yeah, they're all going to take their course tonight, so. Need a motion to, no, just move on. Yeah, we'll take its course. Next legislation, first reading, I'll ask Mr. Moore to read the first reading of twenty-five dash twenty-one appropriation. Heard the first reading of twenty-five dash twenty-one. Any questions or comments? Allow this ordinance to take its course. Legislation at the second reading, I'll ask Mr. Moore to read the first reading of twenty-six dash twenty-one.
There's two titled appropriations, um, twenty-six, twenty-one.
Appropriations. You heard the first reading of twenty-six dash twenty-one. Any questions or comments? Allow this ordinance to take its course. Legislation at the third reading. I'll ask Mr. Moore to give the third reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-one.
In order to amend the city for Shocking's qualified ordinance, chapter eleven seventeen, R one, one family residence in district.
For the third reading of ordinance dash eighteen dash twenty-one, question is, shall this ordinance pass? Mr. Moore, please follow the roll. Andrews? Mark Roth?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-one has passed. Got no resolutions. The old business? New business? Communications? Mr. Moore, when's the next date and time of our meeting?
June twenty-eighth at seven PM here in council chambers.
Motion for the meeting to be adjourned? Moore, follow the roll. Andrews?
Yes.
Mark Roth?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Uh, Moore, yes, Turner?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.